Welcome to the Bakersfield City Council Meeting. This television broadcast is brought to you by the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 10:00 AM, and the following Wednesday at 7:00 PM. You can download the agenda for this meeting at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Presiding over this evening's meeting, the Honorable Karen Go.
Good afternoon. It's my pleasure to call to order the 5:15 City Council Meeting of November 1st, 2017. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Go.
Here.
Vice Mayor Smith.
I am here.
Councilmember Rivera.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Weir.
Here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Here.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Here.
Councilmember Parlier.
Here.
Well, what a wonderful day to see all of you out there and so many young people. We have some special guests with us. I'll be stepping down as mayor so somebody else can take over. We have a teen city government day here, and how wonderful that we have representatives from many of our high schools who have been learning about city government, and they will play a part in today's agenda. So, right now, it is my honor to be able to introduce the student mayor, Savannah Bascencio, and she's going to share a little bit about herself.
My name is Savannah Bascencio. I go to Independence High School. My college goal is either to attend the Air Force Academy or go to USC. My career goal is to be an officer in the Air Force. My GPA, cumulative GPA, is 4.13. I have received an Academic Excellence Achievement Award freshman through my junior year. My school activities involve ASB vice president. I'm also the vice president of the Ecology Club. I am a blood drive ambassador. I am a National Honor Society member. I am the vice president of Mu Alpha Theta, and I'm also a cheerleader. My hobbies include exercising and hanging out with my family and my friends. My interests include anything with the environment or math, and I also love cheering. My community service, I serve as a blood drive ambassador at my school. I served as a youth cheer coach. I also served as a link crew member, church shepherd, and I also do a bunch of community service through NHS, and I am also the grad week representative of my school.
Is that all? It's fantastic, fantastic, and USC, it's a fantastic choice. Do you have family here?
Yes, I do. My dad's here.
Your dad's here. So, can you just wave, Dad? Thank you for this wonderful future leader, or current leader and future leader. So, now, we would like to have our Ward One is not here, but would you go ahead? Oh, he is here now. There you are, Councilmember Rivera. Would you introduce your council member?
I needed extra time to put my jersey on. I think that's why I was late. So, here I have Savannah Pulis, who is from Centennial High School, and she's got high aspirations to go to much better schools than I did. Here she is.
Hi, I'm Savannah. I would love to go to Pepperdiner Syracuse University. My career goal is to be involved in public relations. I'm involved in many activities at my school. I'm the ASB president right now. I'm our spirit crew, known as red zone leader, and in my virtual business class, I'm the advertising specialist. My hobbies and interests include filming videos. I love editing and posting, recording videos, and I'm involved in a lot of community service with the Bakersfield Fire Department Relief Association. And that's me.
Thank you for being here, and do you have family or relatives, friends here today?
Yeah, my dad's here.
All right, wave. Thank you, Dad. All right, very good. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor Go. My guest today is from the awesome East High School, Go Blades. Monsay Garcia is our student representing Ward Two.
Good evening. My name is Monsay Garcia, and I am the ASB president at East Bakersfield High School. My college goal in California is UC Davis, UCLA, or USC, and outside are Georgetown and UPenn. My career goal involves two majors, and that is agriculture, business, law, and of course, in the City of Bakersfield. My overall GPA is a 4.33, and I am currently in the running for valedictorian. I have been a recipient or principal honors reception sophomore all the way to my senior year. My school activities, of course, involve ASB presidency, We the People, mock trial, National Honor Society, also known as Blade Family Honors, Spanish Honor Society, CSF, member of School Site Council, Environmental Club, and East High mariachi. Hobbies and interests: music, orchestra and mariachi, of course, and sports, cross-country and tennis. And community service involve, this summer 2017, I was able to be a part of Andre Gonzalez Children's First Camping, and most of my service is done in church, volunteer music, a volunteer in the music group, and once again, in the mariachi group. That is it.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm pleased to introduce Anthony Solis from Foothill High School.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Anthony Solis, and I'll be presenting at Foothill High School. I am the ASB president at Foothill High School. My future career is to be able to help the kids in the future. I would like to be a school counselor or be involved in administrator, administration of my school, which is Foothill High School. So, that's one of my goals. My hobbies is to be, I like to run, but I'm also creative, I like doing things in my room, like be able to do posters and like last minute things for my school. My interests, I love taking pictures. I like to edit them and be able to post them on my account on Instagram. I volunteer at my church a lot. This summer, I was able to go to Costa Rica, which was an amazing experience. I was able to build a church and help with the kids, and they were amazing. It was an amazing experience. At school, I'm involved in FFA, FCA, which is Fellowship of Christian Athletes. I'm in CSF, and one of my last things is community service. I volunteer at church, and so my GPA is a 3.5. I'm in honors, and I'm in CSF. That's it. Yeah, my mom's right there.
Mom? Mom. Hey, welcome, Anthony.
Good job.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you. My student is Sadie Armijo from Highland High School. She plans on going to Northridge, and I would like to say to her and all these other students, please come back to Bakersfield. You're a great community asset, and we'd love to see you back after you go to college. Here she is.
Hello, I'm Sadie Armijo. I'm from Highland High School. For college, I am verbally committed to play soccer at Cal State University of Northridge. I plan on getting my bachelor's in psychology and pursuing a career in medicine. I'm a student athlete with a 4.25 GPA. I'm currently first in class. I've qualified for CSF and academic awards for maintaining a 4.0 or higher for every semester of high school. I've received the Jockey Club Outstanding Athlete Award for soccer, and today, I received the Glendon Rogers Award for Excellence in Scholarship Leadership and Community Service. For school, I am on varsity volleyball and, the varsity volleyball and soccer team. I've been on ASB for two years. I've been in link crew for two years. I've been the scrub club president for two years. I'm currently volleyball club president, soccer club vice president. And my hobbies, I enjoy working out and lifting with my dad and my brother, playing sports, reading and watching movies. And for community service, I have volunteered with Relay for Life, the Ronald McDonald House, the Nate Foundation for Pediatric Brain Cancer, and I've organized a school-wide collection of toiletries and books for the elderly during the winter season.
Welcome. Well, welcome. That's quite an accomplishment. Councilmember Freeman.
I don't know if I ever knew anyone who had a 4.0. So, I'm in awe up here of all of you, but I'd like to introduce Leann McQueen, probably related to Steve McQueen. You probably don't even know who Steve McQueen is. Oh, good, good, from Liberty, and I'm going to let Leann tell you about herself and her future.
Hi, my name's Leann McQueen. I'm from Liberty High School. My college goal is to go to Cal Poly Pomona and major in civil engineering, and then ultimately, I'd like to use civil engineering in the missionary field. I'm currently at the top of class with a weighted 4.5 GPA. I was part of the first place super quiz team in the Physics Olympics and am in running for valedictorian. I am the recipient of the Glendon Rogers Award and won the Spirit and Interview Award in Distinguished Young Woman last year. I am the ASB club commissioner and have been an ASB for my four years at Liberty. I'm the president of FCA, Treasurer of Bible Club, and the deputy CEO of our business for honors economics. Some of my interests are and hobbies is that I like to coach volleyball at Club Jamba. I'm involved in my church youth group, and I really like outdoor activities and playing sports for fun. I also like taking trips to Lake Buena Vista. For community service, I'm in the Four Dimension Program. I also am very passionate about special needs and volunteer with the Special Needs Ministry at our church. And I've also ran the Schoolwide Community Service Project for the second time this year at Liberty High School.
Are your parents here tonight?
They're not.
Oh, okay, well.
Okay, well, welcome. Councilmember Sullivan.
Yes, my, first of all, outstanding group of young people, and my student is Fernando Argueta from South High School. Fernando.
Hello, good evening. My name, like I said, is Fernando Argueta. I'm from South High School. College, my college goal is going to USC under biology major. My career goal is going into becoming an autoimmune disease specialist. My GPA is a 4.01 cumulus. School activities I'm involved in is I am ASB president this year. I am part of the Engineering and Science and Math Academy at my high school. I am part of the, I am a blood drive ambassador. I've been part of link crew, band and swimming also, as well as club swimming. My interests and hobbies are I love listening to music, playing music, physical exercise, helping others, most importantly, as well as traveling and then just hanging out with friends. Community services, I'm part of Teams for Genes. All you can do is, I started Relay for Life Club at my high school this past year. I'm also Relay for Life team captain for my high school, and I was able to help make that happen. I am also part of the Four Dimension and Juvenile Services Program. Thank you.
Welcome. Are your parents here? Councilmember Parlier.
Thank you, Mayor. It's my pleasure to introduce Paula Rodriguez from Golden Valley High School. Paula?
Good afternoon. My name's Paula Rodriguez. I go to Golden Valley High School. My college goal would be to go to UC Irvine to major in Spanish and have a minor in Educational Sciences in the hope of becoming a Spanish teacher. My GPA is a 4.0 cumulative GPA, and I just got today the Glendon Rogers Award. My school activities are I'm senior class treasurer, honor society president, science bowl president, group leader for Interact, and I'm in We the People. My hobbies and interests include music. I did band for six years, and astronomy. I really like science. And then, my community service, I am a volunteer at Adventist Health Bakersfield, which just got named, from San Joaquin Community Hospital, and I volunteer in the NICU.
Thank you. Paula's parents aren't here, but thank you so much for your accomplishments.
Welcome. Outstanding. And we have one more assistant city manager. Mr. Tella.
Thank you, Mayor Go, members of the council. It's my privilege to introduce to you Natalie Lovin, who is a senior at VHS, and she's going to tell you a little bit about herself.
Good evening. My name is Natalie Lovin. I am a senior at VHS. At school, I am this year's ASB president and one of the three school mascots, Dottie Triller. I'm also a part of the French Honor Society, the choir program, and I am a link crew leader. I have a 4.3 GPA, and I'm ranked number one of my class. Outside of school, I am a dancer. I dance for Civic Dance Center. I've been dancing for 12 years now. I'm also a lead mentor for the Shine for Girls Program, and I am the student intern for our local nonprofit Kern Dance Alliance. I'm also a youth board member for the Relay for Life team. My future goals, I hope to attend USC next year, specifically the Gloria Kaufman School of Dance. I would like to obtain my BFA in performance and choreography, and one day, become a professional dancer and choreographer.
Welcome. Three Trojans. Do you have friends or family in the audience?
Yeah, oh, no.
Okay, well, what a fantastic group. I think we ought to take a picture, give them a round of applause. So, let's see. And let's stand behind them. So, take the picture, and we'll stand behind, and then we'll get, yeah, hold it up, so. So, and two.
Okay, not sure if we're gonna, oh, yeah, we totally are. Okay, on three? One, two, three? Do we, okay, she's over there. On three, one, two, three, one more? Good.
Thank you. Give them a round of applause. To stay up here for this next portion, at this time, Pastor Joseph at Jordan, Christ First Ministry, is going to offer the invocation. Pastor Jordan has been a leader in helping us with gang prevention, years and years and years of dedicated service. I really appreciate that. And then, Pastor, thank you so much. Following the invocation, Kayden Perez and Melissa Fredrickson, sixth grade students from Caroline Harris Elementary School, will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Kayden and Melissa are co-presidents of Harris Elementary, and in October, I had the pleasure of being there when their school was named Healthier U.S. Gold School by the U.S. Department of Agriculture. Harris School received that healthier U.S. school challenge recognition for creating a healthy environment by promoting good nutrition, physical activity, and nutrition education. We're so proud that Harris is one of only two schools in California to receive the gold award. Their principal, Ms. Anne Lopez, is right here. Thank you so much for your leadership there, and congratulations to Kayden, Melissa, Principal Anne Lopez, and the Harris Hawks. And at this time, I'd ask you all to stand for the invocation, please, and then remain standing for the pledge.
Let us pray. Gracious and eternal God, we come before you with thanksgiving and praise. We thank you for all the many blessings that you've bestowed upon us, those that are seen as well as those that are unseen. Father God, we ask that you bestow your blessings upon this city council, all our elected officials, and continuously bless the City of Bakersfield. Father God, as we say this prayer, we offer it all up to you in Jesus Christ's name. Thank God, and we all say it. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor, and now the pledge. Come forward. The flag salute.
Salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. You may be seated. What wonderful young people we have. It's a joy to know that we're in good hands. I'm going to now turn this over to our new mayor.
Here are a few guidelines to help our meeting run smoothly. We request that you turn off your phones. In keeping with council policy, council members aren't allowed to send or receive electronic communications during the meeting. Please be courteous in use of cameras and videos. Applause is allowed during presentations portion of the meeting, but isn't allowed at other times during the meeting. For safety reasons and as a courtesy to others, no signs are allowed in the council chambers. Thank you for your cooperation. Madam Clerk, please read the first item.
Public comments. We have received five speaker cards this evening, two speakers regarding the same subject, and the remaining speakers about separate subjects.
Thank you. At this time, we'll receive public statements. All statements are given a three-minute time limit, 15 minutes per topic. Speakers, if you're out there, would you come forward so we can save some time? Just come where you can easily get to the podium. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statement, please give those to the clerk. She'll give copies to the council. Please avoid any behavior that disrupts the meeting, and we're very interested and concerned with your issues. Due to the public notice requirement of the Brown Act, the council can't take action when an item isn't on the agenda. The council can, however, refer your matter to committee or request staff to contact you. If you're here to speak on hearing items 10A or B, now is not the time to speak. You'll be given an opportunity when those items are called later in the meeting. Madam Clerk, would you please call the first public speaker?
Karen King regarding free rides for veterans.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself and go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor Go, and members of the council. I'm Karen King. I'm the CEO of Golden Empire Transit District, and as you know, November 11th is Veterans' Day, and I'm here this evening to let you know that Get is wanting to honor our veterans, not just on Veterans' Day, but throughout the month of November. We will be offering free rides to all veterans and all active duty service members beginning today and continuing through November 30th. If you have a military ID, you just need to show that to the driver, and they will let you ride free anywhere you need to go, as often as you want to go for the entire month. In addition, we want the community to know our pride in our service members, and we are putting a rap on one of our buses that thanks our military for their service. So, look for that bus around town this month. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. King. Let's get the word out to our veterans. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
Marvin Dean regarding miscellaneous items.
Please introduce yourself.
Good evening. I've got several items I'm going to speak on, and then I've got to leave. I've got to be down there.
Mr. Dean, would you please say your name for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Marvin Dean. I'm here, speak on several items, and then I've got to rush off to be at LAX and catch a flight by 10 o'clock to go to Atlanta. Last month or a couple months ago, a person came before this council and spoke in my behalf, because I was out of town, and said that I had filed my 501 as an intent to run for the first ward city council, and I spoke to my councilman Willie Earl over there, and we were going to do exploratory committee and see what kind of support was out there. It's come back very supportive, so we filed our 110, and we're officially, we'll be a candidate. But I want to say this to the public and anybody to hear this. I think our councilman Willie has done a great job. My intent was to support him if he had ran again for reelection. I supported him the last time, and I intend to carry on in his footsteps. And I'm going to speak about an issue that came before this council on marijuana and how I would have voted, and I said I'd come here and talk about if I was, so people get an idea of what they would get if I'm at the, honored to be elected, so people know where I stand ahead of time. But the three issues I wanted to talk about, four issues. One, I gave you guys a copy of an event we're doing down in Fresno. As you guys know, I'm involved with the High Speed Rail. We're going to do a reception, and we're going to be recognizing people we call champion that have done great things for small business and DBEs and contracting opportunity. On that, the second item I wanted to speak to briefly was Team Bakersfield, led by the Community Development Director Jackie, Public Works, and I thank the city assistant manager and, and on the ninth in Sacramento, they've spoke about what we're doing here in Bakersfield before the High Speed Rail, and I'm very, very proud of that, very, very proud. You guys did an excellent job. Excellent job. I'm very proud of that. I had to leave a little early. I couldn't tell you guys that. You did a hell of a job.
Mr. Dean, you have about a minute left.
I see. I'm going to be very brief. The second thing I was going to speak on was the Cal Water franchise. I was going to oppose that, but I talked to the Cal Water people, and I'm going to support the recommendation for the franchise. And my concern was that I'm going to meet with them, that they need to do more with General Order 156 that regulates them with the PUC that says they have to contract with small business and disadvantaged businesses, and I think they need to do more. And the last item I'm going to speak on, I still got 30 seconds, Mayor, is the marijuana issue that came before this board and the county board of supervisors. Had I been here, I'd have supported regulating marijuana. The underground economy is going to be there. We need to regulate it, control it, tax it, and I think we can get better, better use of those facilities in terms of being law-abiding citizens. And then, you're going to make citizens that need that for medical reasons to go underground and buy it. So, where we can, we need to tax it. I think the vote that Willie took would have, was the right vote. Thank you, and I'll see you all at the next meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Dean.
And I made it three seconds early.
No, you're, that's over. Thank you, Mr. Dean. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
Sam Vagel regarding illegal street racing.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
You would bear with me one moment. My name is Sam Vagel, and I'm a resident of southwest Bakersfield. I'm here to address the illegal street racing that happens quite frequently at the Wincle Parking Lot, Panama Lane and Ash Road. I understand this past Saturday, the local police were there making their presence known, and I commend them. On most Saturday nights, the racers meet there, and they refer to these as meets. Usually, it involves anywhere between 150 to 200 cars. I've been there. I saw it only because of the noise attracted me to see what is causing my inability to sleep. It usually goes on all the way till 3:00 AM. It's very frequent that this happens. Now, it's happening more than just Saturday nights. We're at like four nights a week. In the late evening hours, I've even seen them going in excess of 100 miles per hour. They usually travel up Panama Lane, Ash Road, Gosford, and District Boulevard. They usually post their meets in advance on social media. Telling on yourself, right? Unfortunately, the California Vehicle Code is not enforceable on public property. However, there are some exceptions. I'm speaking from experience, okay? Referring to, as, I'm retired now. We'll leave that, leave it at that. Unfortunately, the street racers also know this, that the vehicle code is unenforceable on private property. There are some exceptions. Now, I think there's something that we need to look at. The City of Ontario, which is in San Bernardino County, they have had this problem for many years also. They adopted their own municipal codes. I provided a copy to each and every one of you. Those municipal codes have been tested in court, and the end result is they're still in place. I've spoke to Ontario Police Department, their representatives, and they were recommending that we apply for grant funding through the California Office of Traffic Safety. I know we already do this. There's a program called the STEP Program, Selective Traffic Enforcement Program, but this is not enough. I spoke to Wincle management at that location, and they're working on, their corporate offices working on remedying this problem.
Thank you, Mr. Vagel. Your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Parlier.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Sam, so much for your comments. I talked to Sam, I guess it was earlier in the week. The police department did conduct an operation, and according to the press release, two drivers were cited for reckless driving, six were cited for suspended driver's license, seven vehicles were impounded, 19 drivers were cited for other vehicle code violations. Sam, I think you have some good ideas we were talking about with Ontario. If somebody from the police department could reach out to Mr. Vagel, and if there's any ideas that something we could do with our code may be even better, please bring those to the city attorney, and maybe we'll circle back if we need to go ledge and let for something. Thank you so much. Thank you, Sam.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
Cindy Everman regarding street racing.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself. You might want to pull down your mic.
This.
The one to your right.
Yes. My name is Cindy Everman, and I've been a resident of the Silver Creek area for 23 years. Tonight, I stand before you to express my concerns about a couple of issues that, in my opinion, has a negative impact on our neighborhood and its residents there. Recently, the local news station brought to surface a problem that we're having that Sam was discussing in the Wincle Sam was discussing in the Wincle parking lot. Customers complain that their safety has been compromised due to the congestion and because of the loitering that goes on in these areas, making it difficult to shop or visit any of the stores in that area. Oftentimes, parking entrances have been blocked, making it difficult to maneuver a car through the traffic to park and creates an unsafe situation for anyone wanting to walk into these stores. Not only has this become a safety issue, but also has become an annoyance to the surrounding neighborhoods that are forced to hear the loud humming noises coming from these vehicles and to inhale the smell of fumes created. And it creates an unhealthy atmosphere. My second concern is one of more of a personal nature of growing traffic between Harris and Wyboll traveling west towards Gosford in the backyards of residents there. While I recognize the fact that Bakersfield is a growing city, I feel that my once safe and peaceful neighborhood is paying the price for this growth and that consideration for the residents have been overlooked. With the addition of public transportation and large shopping locations, our streets are congested and filled with noise from loud street bikes and speeding autos that exhibit no respect to residential speed limits or posted stop signs. There are parks and public schools in this area and the safety for families and small children are threatened daily. It is my opinion that the residents in Silver Creek area are paying the price for the city growth and the lack of concern for the residents has been ignored. The noise of speeding autos and bikes has escalated to an annoying daily and nightly occurrence. It is not unusual to be awakened up any night of the week to the sound of individuals doing donuts and racing down Harris at very fast and dangerous speeds. It is my hope that by addressing these concerns before you tonight, that you will be able to adopt new municipal codes that allow enforcement on private commercial property and our residential area. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Ms. Everman. Councilmember Parlier.
Thank you, Mayor. Again with the police department, if you can continue efforts in that Wincle area and along with Harris too, if we can do some traffic enforcement efforts in that area, I'd sure appreciate it. And Nick, if Public Works can take a look with Harris and see if we can do anything to mitigate what she's talking about also, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Teri Maxwell regarding fair balance.
Good evening, please introduce yourself.
Thank you, Merco. My name is Teri Maxwell and I want to talk about fair balance tonight. As I watched the budget presentation that you were giving at your last meeting, I really questioned a lot of things that were being put in front of you. And it seems to me that if Mr. Hewitt gets to spend almost a half hour letting you know all of the things that the staff has put together, if anybody has a question about it or anybody would like to rebut to that, there basically is no forum other than spending three minutes in front of you like I'm spending right now. I would like to see this council take the bull by the horns and based on fair balance that you allow if the staff or if you're given a presentation, a workshop, a discussion, that at the next meeting, if somebody in the public does want to rebut some of the things that were said, that they do not have just a three-minute limit, that they're able to cover the subject thoroughly. At the present time, this council is being given one side of the story. And I think it's important for the public as well as for the council to hear somebody else. When I sat there and watched the population growth of Bakersfield over the last 10 years being 15%, did any of you equate that to only being a 1.4% increase in population over a 10-year period? That's per annum? In order to attain the population forecast for 2040 and 2045, you now have to grow at a minimum of 5%. And if you, if you look at some of the statistics, especially in the EIR for the Centennial Corridor, you have to grow at 7.5% at this point to attain those numbers. Now, I need more than three minutes to go over some of those things. I could have questioned a lot of the things around just about any slide that Mr. Hewitt put up in front of you. And I think it's fair balance. So I'd like to see someone put a resolution or an ordinance or some change to the way that you conduct your meetings so that when the staff does do a presentation, that someone from the public, if they desire to give a rebuttal to that, has the opportunity to stand in front of everybody, this council as well as the public on KGOV, and deliver to them how they view things so that you can have that as a counterbalance to the one side of dialogue that you're getting at the present time. I also think that there are times when the staff is represented in the newspaper and they say something that, again, at a forum like this, it's not a great forum for a rebut on things like 24th Street having three times as much traffic accidents as a similar street. I'd like to see the proof on that because it doesn't exist. In the EIR for 24th Street, it was stated that the 24th Street area you're talking about has substantially less accidents than normal. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Maxwell. Councilmember Rivera.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, along the lines of, of the comment we just heard, I'd like to refer an item to budget and finance, kind of more related to a, this idea of participatory, to a participatory budget process, which I've seen done in cities like Fresno, San Jose, Oakland and elsewhere, not just in California but across the country, that really gives, you know, the public a, an even greater opportunity to kind of tell us what priorities they want us to focus on and incorporate that into our budget process. So if we could add that to a future agenda item, I can talk to staff a little bit more about it, but it's being done elsewhere and I think it'd be a welcomed addition to Bakersfield. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, if our student elected officials, future elected officials would like to join us in the audience, that would be a good time to make this transition. Thank you so much for being here. We really appreciate it. And thank you again. If you would like, I know some of you have homework which you need to do in order to earn your 4.5 GPA. So, yes. Speaker who didn't turn in his card.
Sorry about that.
Would you give that to the city attorney, please? To the city clerk, please? Madam Clerk, would you please announce the public speaker?
David Brust regarding marijuana.
Welcome, please introduce yourself.
Thank you. My name is David Brust. I'm the co-founder of B-RAPS, Bakersfield Residents Against Pot Shops. We'd like to applaud the city's latest crackdown on pot shops in the city of Bakersfield. Thank Police Chief Lael Martin, City Attorney Jenny Gennaro, Assistant City Attorney Richard Iger, City Manager Alan Tandy, Code Enforcement, and the majority of the city council that understands the scourge illegal pot shops have had on our community. For the last five years, we have witnessed the growth of these illegal pot shops, the associated crime and a lack of leadership in our two porous wards. We pleaded with our past city councilmen to simply enforce the law or adopt a new ordinance to give the city the needed teeth behind enforcement to no avail. Some on this very board were simply happy to throw up their hands and a blind eye to the murders, kidnappings, armed robberies, illegal drug sales and street shootouts plaguing our community. Then, eight months ago, the city of Bakersfield passed a new ordinance, holding landlords responsible for renting to these illegal pot shops and enforcement became a priority. Through the hard work of the city, we have closed more pot shops in eight months than we had the previous four years. Landlords are evicting their tenants and we are beginning to see a difference in lander, but it's not over yet. We need more enforcement. A year and a half ago, B-RAPS issued complaints on 16 shops that then grew to 21 before the city began enforcement. Now we only have four left. Some on this board believe the current cost of enforcement is too high. And to them, I say, what is the cost of a person's life? Is it $30,000, $48,000, $72,000? How about the cost of addiction treatment for our youth, petty thefts, home burglaries, homelessness and the pain and suffering of families ravaged by the crimes caused in part by marijuana addiction? It's easy to turn a blind eye and say, let's just regulate what to this point is a criminal endeavor because it will make us tax revenue. And to that I say, what would that make the city council? Partners with drug dealers? No, what we need is to continue to put the hammer down on these shops and drive them out of our neighborhoods. There may be a time and place in the future to regulate, but this isn't it. The state has yet to pass any regulations. They haven't even promised to establish an enforcement office in Bakersfield like ABZ has, or even tell us our share of tax revenue from the state. To regulate now would be a huge mistake. It's naive to sit on the dais and vociferate about regulation when you have literally no idea what effect it will have on our community. Nearly every city in Kern County and the county has voted for a ban. The wise and prudent way to proceed is to actively enforce our current law, get rid of these illegal shops, let them know we are a law and order city and wait till the issues of regulation and crime gets worked out in other cities. A city councilman and woman, your number one job is public safety and allowing these illegal shops and associated crime to continue to exist is not living up to that priority. I have here two documents for you to review. I'm sorry. I'm going to just give a couple of documents for you guys. One is from the district attorney from Denver, the Denver DA, and another one is from our mission down here talking about the growing homelessness that has faced Denver. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead and give those to the city clerk, please. Thank you. Councilmember Rivera.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not sure if you have a pen and you're not, but 661-477-0401 is my number. And since I got elected in 2013, I've received zero calls from you on this particular issue. So I can only assume you're referring to me in some of your comments there. I think I've clearly articulated why I feel the way I do and, you know, obviously disagree with the city's approach, but encourage the dialogue. Just encourage you to actually pick up the phone and call.
Next item, please.
Under workshops, we have Item A, Mesa Marin Sports Complex Naming Rights. Item one, presentation, and item two, an agreement.
Thank you. Ms. Hoover.
Honorable Mayor, members of city council, it is my privilege to be here today to acknowledge Torina Homes for answering the call for naming rights at Mesa Marin. This softball complex at Mesa Marin hosts over 175,000 participants annually in leagues and tournaments. It's located at Highway 78 and Bedford Green and it is uniquely located in a growing part of Bakersfield. Mesa Marin is a master planned sports complex being built in phases. The next phase includes playgrounds, a spray ground, walking paths and picnic shelters to open this coming spring. A dog park has already opened there as well. Future phases will include four more softball fields, soccer fields, multipurpose fields and more picnic and walking areas. And an entrance off of 184, so it runs between 178 and 184. Torina Homes Incorporated is a Bakersfield-based home building company with an interest in quality of life for residents throughout Bakersfield. A new home development known as Shamrock Hills is starting construction across the road from Mesa Marin on Bedford Green. It is my honor to introduce several representatives from Torina Homes tonight. James McKay, Edith Gibson, Matthew Roberts, Joel Ramirez. If they could come forward and Mayor Go and Councilmember Weir, if you could also come forward, they have a presentation to make to you.
My name's James McKay, for those of you who do not know me. Torina Homes is a locally owned company. We build homes here in Kern County. Shamrock Hills is one of our communities here in Bakersfield and it's situated between two new schools and the great Mesa Marin Sports Complex. Torina Homes is focused on greeting, building green and creating healthy and physical environment for the community. By donating the money to the Parks Department, we hope to improve the health and well-being of the community and the future buyers of our homes. We're happy to be part of this Mesa Marin Sports Complex and building the park and not just our, our homes in the community.
That amount is hard to read. Can that be read for us?
It's a check to the city of Bakersfield for $200,000.
The basic terms of the agreement are for three years, starting January 1st, 2018, for $200,000 as you saw. And the funds are to be used for future construction at Mesa Marin Complex. The name of the complex will be known as Torina Homes Sports Complex at Mesa Marin. And if we could have a vote or...
Councilmember Weir.
I would be happy to do that. You know, the first one's always the hardest. And I'd like to thank Torina Homes for coming up, stepping up, doing a great thing for that park and doing a great thing for northeast Bakersfield. And I am pleased to move approval of the agreement. Thank you so much.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you very much, Torina Homes. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Consent calendar items 8A through 8U for approval. A staff memorandum was received regarding item 8A, transmitting a corrected document.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I would make a motion to approve consent calendar items 8A through 8U with the corrections to 8A in the memo.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Under hearings.
Before I open the public hearings, I'll go over the presentation time policy. Each side will be allowed 15 minutes. It's 15 minutes for all speakers, so it's important that you identify yourself, make your statement quickly so others may speak. We'll hear statements from those opposed to the staff recommendation, then we'll hear from those who'd like to speak in favor of staff's recommendation. If there's testimonies on both sides, each side will be allowed a five-minute rebuttal. There's a clock on the wall behind me which indicates 15 minutes. Please step to the microphone and identify yourself. After 14 minutes, a yellow light will come on. At the end of 15 minutes, a red light will flash indicating your time is up. Quickly end your statement at that time. You may ask questions. You may ask questions during your statement, but they won't be answered until the public hearing is closed. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statement, please give those to the clerk and she'll provide copies to the council. Please be courteous to others who wish to speak. Unless there's approval by the majority of the city council, there's a strict 15-minute time limit for all those in favor or in opposition to staff's recommendation. So please be concise, avoid repeating the remarks of previous speakers. And councilmembers, if you need to step out at all during the hearing, if you'd let me know and I'll put a little stop during that time. Madam Clerk, please read the first public hearing item.
Public Hearing on Resolution of Necessity to Determine the Public Interest and Necessity for Acquisition of Certain Real Property by Eminent Domain for the Street Improvement North of Brundage Lane and West of Union Avenue, Phase 1B and 5.
Mr. Fidler.
Honorable Mayor and councilmembers, over the past several years, the city has been constructing storm drain collection system improvements in older parts of the downtown area. As part of the system, we install new curbs, gutters, storm drain collection system, underground storm drain collection system. Now we're reaching a point where we're exceeding the design capacity of the existing system. So in order for us to continue with the installation of new curbs, gutters, and sidewalks, we need to construct additional retention basin systems within this area. As the city council is being asked to adopt a resolution of necessity to acquire in fee approximately 41,960 square feet of a larger parcel of vacant land located at 141 First Street by eminent domain for the construction of a retention basin as part of the street improvements for north of Brundage Lane and west of Union Avenue. This area, we've been constructing curbs, gutters, and sidewalks, and storm drain collection system for the past two to three years. Should the council approve the resolution of necessity, city staff and the city attorney will initiate court proceedings to acquire the property as well as seek prejudgment possession of the property as necessary. Throughout the process, city staff will continue to work with the property owner to attempt to negotiate and finalize an agreement reflecting fair and equitable compensation in the property. Staff recommends approval, adoption of the resolution of necessity.
Thank you, Mr. Fidler. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. How many people would like to speak in opposition to staff's recommendation? Would you just raise your hands, please? Seeing none, how many people would like to speak in support of staff's recommendation? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and return it to council for comment and action. Vice Mayor.
I would move adoption of the resolution of necessity.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Item B, Public Hearing to Consider First Reading of an Ordinance Granting a Franchise to California Water Service Company.
Mr. Telia.
If I could bring up the presentation there, Julie. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Go, members of the council. Steve Telia at the city manager's office. I am here tonight to provide you an introduction into this item, which is a public hearing to discuss the approval of a Cal Water franchise. I'm just going to go through some slides, and I will try to be brief, but try to cover the information relevant to this item. Cal Water has a franchise currently with the city of Bakersfield that allows Cal Water to distribute water within their service territory. And I'm going to show a map here in a minute that covers that area of town. And it's important to remember that as I'm talking about this franchise, it does refer only to the area of town that is serviced and operated, or that is serviced by Cal Water in which they operate their own utility. The franchise provides Cal Water with the right to use the city's right-of-way. In exchange for that, they pay a franchise fee to the city for that use. The city's franchise agreement with Cal Water does not provide the city with any authority or oversight over Cal Water's rate-making process. They're a regulated utility, and that process is governed by the California Public Utilities Commission. And so just to sort of orient you with where we're talking about, the dark green area on this map is the area in question. This is the area that is served by Cal Water and is related to the franchise agreement that we're talking about this evening. And just sort of a different perspective of the same map, we sort of overlaid the Cal Water service area with the various council wards. I think, just given the way that Cal Water's system is constructed, they have a little bit of almost every ward, with the exception of Ward 5. I think Ward 5 is the only ward that does not have any Cal Water territory in it. So the current Cal Water franchise, which was approved in 2015, is set to expire shortly here in December of this year. There's a specific process that is utilized to approve any sort of franchise agreement with a utility, and that includes the utility submitting an application to the city requesting a new franchise, and that has been accomplished. On October 11, at our last council meeting, the council initiated the formal steps in this process by approving the acceptance of the application, and then secondarily approving a resolution of intention to grant the franchise, and also set a public hearing on the matter which is taking place tonight. Since this process began, staff has worked with Cal Water to review the franchise document that was approved a couple of years ago to identify any areas of change or modification that are needed. We've done that process, and then there's really two areas that have been adjusted from the franchise that was approved two years ago. The first is related to the term. As I noted before, we had a very short term associated with the last approval. Typically, these franchises can run anywhere from a couple of years, as we've had, to more commonly 50-year franchises, 25, could even be indeterminate, as we have with some of our other utilities. In this process, what we're proposing and what Cal Water has agreed to, and I think meets some of the desire of the council that has been expressed in the past, is we're having an initial five-year term period for the franchise, which is, which also includes several five-year extension periods, assuming that in any one of those terms, the council does not take action to decide to renegotiate the terms of the agreement. So in total, it could be a 25-year franchise, but it's broken up into five-year increments. The second sort of area that was modified, a couple of years ago, at the request of the council, we put in some provisions that required Cal Water to come before the council at times and provide information related to their utility, to their rates. They also required to provide the city with notice any time that they're applying to the California Public Utilities Commission for some sort of rate adjustment. So what this section does is it really sort of more formalizes the process that was put in place two years ago, but that has evolved. Really what it does, it kind of has three components. The first component is it would require Cal Water no less than annually to come before the council, and just generally provide an update to the council about the operations of their system. And also, in the cases where they are going through a general rate case cycle, they would provide information to the council via that forum. In addition, they have an obligation to provide the city clerk and the city manager's office with information related to any sort of advice letter or application that they may submit to the PUC that might have an effect on the ultimate rates that are paid by ratepayers in the Bakersfield District. And then the third component is, depending upon any one of, receiving any one of those notices, if the council has a desire to bring Cal Water in to provide additional detail or information about any one of those filings, we have the ability to do that once a filing has been submitted to the PUC. So just a little bit about the timeline associated with this process. As I mentioned, there's an advice letter, or I'm sorry, there's an application which has already been submitted. We approved the resolution of intention and accepted the application at the last meeting. Tonight, we're having the, or we provided public notice after the last meeting that this hearing would be taking place. And tonight, we're holding the public hearing to allow the public to comment on this item. Following the public comment, we recommend approval of the first reading of the ordinance with the follow-up of the second reading on the November 15 agenda, and then the franchise, assuming that approval would go into effect 30 days later, or approximately December 15 of this year. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions the council may have, or otherwise stand by following any comments from the public.
Thank you, Mr. Telia. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. How many people would like to speak in opposition to staff's recommendation? Seeing none? Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of staff's recommendation? If so, please come forward. This is in favor? Please introduce yourself.
Mayor and members of the council, I sent you a letter regarding this. Quite often, Cal Water has been blamed for raising their rates and all this sort of stuff. But there's a negative externality which you might want to figure out and to mitigate. And that is what's going to happen when there's $30 billion, with a B, that will have to be paid for by the property owners in this area. And as more cities and counties pull out, and they decide they don't want to pay $30 billion for nothing, then that means we will pay more. And this has been set up, we pay three times for the water that's imported here. And it hasn't helped the people that originally set up for it. They have gotten into a frame of reference of water fare. And now that's going to, people who are going to benefit will be in Beverly Hills. And I really feel sorry for the people in Beverly Hills. But what we need to do is think about what's going to happen then. They will be out here blaming Cal Water, blaming the city for the rates increase, for the $30 billion's going to be paid for off your taxes, and it's going to be paid off for your rates. It's something to look forward to. One thing that might make about mitigating is one of these new things they thought up called a contract. The city may want a contract for their water rather than the blank check that's being given currently. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there someone else who'd like to speak in support of staff's recommendation? Please come forward and introduce yourself.
Hi, my name's Greg Milliman. I'm with California Water Service Company. I won't take much of your time. I just wanted to say that Cal Water is in support of this agreement. We worked with staff to come up with terms that we thought were really fair and appropriate for the city of Bakersfield, and that is to have the opportunity to come before you once a year and give you the state of the district to keep you up to date on how things are going. So just wanted to say we appreciate the effort of Mr. Telia, and as the rest of the staff, and you, to come to a mutually agreeable term. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Milliman. Anyone else who'd like to speak in support of staff's recommendation? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and return it now to council for comment Vice Mayor.
Is there a motion on this?
I'd make a motion for first reading on this ordinance.
You have a motion? Please cast your vote.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Under New Business, Item A, A Resolution Setting the Dates of the Regular City Council Meetings, Budget Hearings, and Department Budget Presentations for Calendar Year 2018.
Thank you, Mr. Telia.
Thank you, Mayor Go, members of the council. It's that time of year again where we look towards the new year that's coming down the pipe, and we have provided a calendar for your consideration that would set the dates for all of our meetings and budget meetings. I believe the clerk's office has taken great care to sort of mimic what we did this year, and also account for any sort of known potential conflict, such as League of California Cities conferences and things of that nature. So we've provided the draft calendar to you in your packet, and I would turn it to you for, over to you for consideration, and if there's any comments or potential changes, otherwise we'd look for a motion to approve.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Seeing no comments, I would move to approve the calendar submitted by staff.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Council and Mayor's Statements.
Councilmember Rivera.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be brief. I sit on the Kern Energy Foundation, and there is a second biannual event happening November 11, Saturday, November 11, at the Kern County Museum, known as the Kern Energy Festival. And it's a fun event for kids, for families, for adults, for anyone really interested in learning more about the diversity of Kern County's homegrown advantages, as I think we have in oil and gas, and wind, and solar, and so many other things. And it's free to the public. So it's 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM on November 11, 2017. There'll be educational exhibits, there'll be food, there'll be music, and all sorts of other things. I encourage folks to comment out and join us. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? We had the privilege recently of hosting our sister city from Bouchon. Thank you, Vice Mayor, for your, uh, thank you, Councilmember Weir, for your leadership in having such a wonderful celebration. We just heard very positive comments, and it was a very warm and welcoming celebration. We also recently had Saint Jean Deluce, the Vice Mayor from there, and a delegation, and that was wonderful. Thank you also, city staff, for all of your help in welcoming our friends, and we're exploring this relationship now with our friends in France, and thank you all for your support. Thank you for being here. Do we have some students here? It looks like we have some students, potentially, Bakersfield College. Welcome, renegades, Cal State, CSUB. Welcome. Hope you enjoyed the meeting and learned a lot, and we look forward to your continual engagement in the civic project, process. If there is nothing further at this time, we stand adjourned at 6:23 in time for the
The 3:30 PM meeting of the Bakersfield City Council is now in session.
Good afternoon. It's my pleasure to call to order the 3:30 City Council Meeting of November 1, 2017. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Go.
Here.
Vice Mayor Smith.
I am here.
Councilmember Rivera.
Go Dodgers!
Councilmember Gonzalez. Councilmember Weir.
Here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Here.
Councilmember Sullivan. And Councilmember Parlier.
Here.
To comply with the Brown Act, we'll receive public statements now. Please limit your comments to the workshop and closed-session items only. All statements are given a three-minute time limit, 15 minutes- All statements are given a three-minute time limit, 15 minutes per subject. Are there any public statements? Seeing none, Madam Clerk? Next item, please.
Under Workshops, we have the Kern Region Active Transportation Plan.
Thank you, Mr. Fidler.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers. Tonight, Kern Cog -- Kern Council of Governments, in partnership with several other jurisdictions in the county, including the city of Bakersfield, work to develop the Kern Regional Active Transportation Plan. The purpose of the plan is to promote walkable and bicycle-friendly environments. Kern Council of Governments contracted with Alta Design Plus Planning -- or Alta Planning Plus Design to prepare the document and the plan. And tonight, Roy Renfro with Alta Planning and Plus Design will be presenting to you. At this time, I'll turn it over to Roy.
All right, thank you. I'll try to keep my remarks quick, because I know there's a certain sporting event in about two hours that we'd like to get to. So thanks again. Again, my name is Rory Renfro with Alta Planning, and we've had the pleasure to work with Kern Cog, Kern Council of Governments, County of Kern, City of Bakersfield, and other regional partners on a Regional Active Transportation Plan for the Kern County area. And just kind of stepping back and thinking about the bigger picture of why we're doing this plan, really walking and bicycling are fundamental transportation modes, and they serve so many purposes beyond getting from A to B. They can really foster healthy communities, they can spur economic development, and just serve as easy and comfortable ways to get from access to school, access to transit, and other community destinations. So that's really what we're keeping in mind, the bigger picture in terms of diversifying our transportation portfolio and providing more personal choices for your constituents. Whoops, I am right-clicking. Here we go. So the goals of the plan are really, they encompass a lot of different areas, ranging from safety and connectivity to healthy communities, providing an equitable transportation system for your residents. It also includes the nuts and bolts in terms of ranging from the high-level policy guidance right down to projects and an implementation framework as you, as a city, embark on your implementation efforts in the years to come. We're really trying to plan for a broad variety of users. I think back in the day when we planned for the bicycle transportation mode, we often were planning for the folks in the upper right-hand of the picture, the strong and fearless riders who felt comfortable biking down just any type of road, whether it's a residential street or highway. But we know that there is a wide, broader constituency out there, a lot of interested but concerned folks who would like to give bicycling or try to do it more often, but they have concerns about safety and comfort. And would we want our kids to be out there using this system? So we're really trying to think about the all ages and abilities, the ages eight to 80, if we will, in terms of answering the question, for whom are we planning? And the same really is true for the pedestrian realm. Most of us probably today are able-bodied, able to walk around pretty darn easily. But it's going to happen that at some point in our lives, whether it's on a temporary basis or permanent, we're all going to experience a disability at some point in our lives, whether it's an injury or through age or something else. And so it's important for us to be thinking about the wide range of needs in the walking realm. They are very quite ranging. It's our job as the project team, working with you as a city, to be thinking about that broader audience as well. So as you know, Kern County is quite large, and the Cog understandably is unable to unearth every square inch of the entire region. And so their approach was to select roughly two dozen focus area communities that exhibit characteristics that can be found throughout the county, ranging from small resort communities down to a big area like metropolitan Bakersfield that has urban and suburban characteristics, down to rural, smaller and rural agricultural communities. So again, trying to hit on the wide swath of communities throughout the region. So the Active Transportation Plan, just moving from beginning to finish, includes a pretty solid assessment of existing conditions, basically what's out there today, what's working well, and where are there opportunities for improvements. And from that, that's the springboard to developing a suite of projects and programs that you, as the city, and your regional partners can move forward in the years to come to improve conditions for people walking and bicycling and accessing transit. But also equally important is an implementation framework to help you answer the question of where do we start first? Where do we focus our investments in year number one, year number two, and so on, over the next couple of decades? So this project has been going on for about a year and a half. We started last summer, and we've been checking in with the community at various points along the way to make sure that the information that we're looking at actually matches conditions on the ground. So there's a lot of data that we looked at, but also got out there on our foot and on bicycles, go figure, to get a sense of how the system is functioning today and what are the opportunities in the future. And we're kind of at the final stages at this point where we're going out, speaking with governing bodies like yourself and Kern Cog, County of Kern, and the incorporated cities, other incorporated cities. And then in the next month or so, probably right after New Year's, we'll be doing just kind of final cleanup and touch-ups on the plan, so that you'll have a plan that you can take forward and start pursuing Caltrans Active Transportation Program grants and other sort of funding sources to put the plan into action. So I won't go through all these, but the plan is pretty, if you were to print out the plan, it's pretty darn large, but it's got a pretty comprehensive inventory, if you will, of where are the current sidewalks and bicycle facilities and paths, the land use composition, where are the collisions happening, where's the risk exposure to people walking and bicycling? We did a thorough review of a lot of great planning work and design work that's been done in the past and currently underway that really relates to this. So ranging from all of the transit development plans, we got High Speed Rail coming in, the Making Downtown Bakersfield Project. Your community is doing so many great things that actually directly relate to this plan. So we kind of felt like that foundation has been built, and so this is kind of the house that we're building on and to kind of pull it all together in terms of making walking and bicycling better for your residents. As I mentioned earlier, nothing beats, it's one thing to stare at a computer and look at maps all day, but nothing beats getting out there and using the system and experiencing it firsthand. And we made an effort, actually, we did this in August. It was quite warm. But nonetheless, we spent a couple of weeks in each of the communities, walking and bicycling, to get a sense of how things are working today. And on the walking realm, the types of infrastructure that are out there ranges widely from formalized sidewalks and crossings to less formal areas where people are just walking on the roadways, because that's really, that's all there is to walk in, in a sense. So diverse, wide diversity in terms of infrastructure that's out there on the ground today. And the same is true in the bicycling realm. Bakersfield, not surprisingly, has a more developed bicycle network than, say, some of the smaller communities out there. So you guys have a great head start, and there's a lot of wonderful opportunities to leverage that momentum that you have put into place and work toward the future. But also equally important to getting out there ourselves is talking with the true experts, which are the residents of Bakersfield and throughout Kern County. These are the folks, yourselves included, who use the system on a daily basis and can tell us all the little fine-grained details about your experiences out there using the system and your kids or your friends and family as well. We did a number of walk audits in partnership with California Walks. We also held a number of standalone workshops at the end of last year, at the beginning of the project. And then in June, we did the farmer's market circuit essentially all around Kern County to present draft recommendations. And that was a lot of fun, because it gave us an opportunity to actually go to the people and not ask for them to come to us, because we know everybody's busy, we've got jobs, we've got kids, we've got family, all these obligations. So going to the people was a great way to garner some feedback as well. We also had a project website that's been going on throughout the duration of the project. And we also included a user survey that people could fill out toward the beginning of the project to help us get a steer in terms of, again, what is the, how does the walking and bicycling system function for you today as a resident of Bakersfield and beyond? So the recommendations in the plan, they span kind of a broad variety of areas, ranging from higher-level policy recommendations and goals down to corridor and intersection-specific recommendations, but also beyond the stuff that you can build. The plan also includes a suite of programs and guidance with regard to maintenance and operations, and also includes a section on potential funding sources, because that's just as important in terms of what we recommend, but how are we going to do it, right? And here's just an example of what some of the maps look like on the pedestrian realm. So each community has a map showing the recommended improvements, but just as important, it includes the details, the project list, that you can migrate to further design and eventually into your capital improvement programs. So it includes things like, what is it we actually want to build out there? Is it a sidewalk or a path? What do we think it's going to cost? And who might be the leading jurisdictions that would be charged with implementing that type of project? And the same is true on the bicycle network side. In developing the bicycle network, we had to take a lot of things into consideration, particularly the characteristics of the streets that we're looking at. So things like, how many cars are traveling on the road each day? How fast are they going? How wide is the road? Is there available to space to do something in there? A lot of things that go into the decision-making process in terms of assigning a particular bicycle facility type, whether it's a bicycle lane, or it's a shared roadway, or something like that. Again, with the goal of appealing to a much broader audience in terms of increasing ridership and improving safety and comfort for your residents. We also know that people walking and bicycling and riding the bus or whatever, we do not stop the trip right at the city limits. And so knowing, just knowing that regional connections are critically important, we actually had some legwork on this through the 2012 Kern County Bicycle Plan, which looked at the entirety of the county and all those kind of intercity connections. So we wove those into this plan as well to address some of those longer-term or those longer intercity active transportation connection needs. And lest we forget the importance of what we call end-of-trip facilities. So is there a place for you to park your bike at the end of the trip, whether it's a school, at a transit stop, at City Hall here, or a park, or something like that? Is there transit stop infrastructure, like shelters and posted maps and things like that, that can be really critically important in informing the decision on whether to make a trip via walking on a bike or in some other means? But also, we know that it's great to cut ribbons on projects, and that's what gets all the love and the attention. But equally important is just making sure that our transportation system is in good working order. So the state of good repair term has been thrown around a lot recently, and it's just as critical for active transportation facilities as it is for our freeways and our transit corridors, et cetera. And so this plan includes some guidance drawing from best practices in terms of how we can keep our active transportation system in good working order. But this plan also recommends a number of other things beyond just stuff that we can build. And we know that communities can derive a much bigger return on your investment if you augment those infrastructure investments with the programmatic elements that, one, get people to know that the system exists and where to go use it and things like that. So we like, you know, people like to say if you build it, they will come. But at Alta, we like to say that if you build it, tell people about it, get them excited about it, they will come in droves. It's kind of our new cliche term. Anyway, I'll throw it out here. But nonetheless, this has a lot of potential to add value to the infrastructure investments that you make as a community. But at the end of the day, like most long-range transportation plans, we have a pretty darn ambitious project list, but we know that we can't implement everything at once. So we, again, need to answer the question of where do we start? Where do we start implementing our big aspirational plan? And so our project team, in consultation with our project steering committee, which the city of Bakersfield had some representation on, including many other stakeholders, we developed a set of criteria here to, for which each project was compared, to give us a sense of how well does a project stack up against another project with these elements in mind. So from that emerged, the long list is kind of prioritized, if you will. So it gives you a sense of, like, here are the projects that we might want to start in the next one, two, three, 10 years, as we start putting the plan into action. But if there's any part of an active transportation plan that should be fluid, if you will, or dynamic, or open to flexibility, it really is the implementation framework, because so many things can change over time, and we may not know what's going to happen in the year, what's 20 years from now, 2037. We may not know what the community composition is going to be. So these are just a couple of, you know, many things can happen. So really, as a city, it's great for you to be opportunistic, to leverage opportunities as they come up, even if, for example, a project was way down at the bottom of the list, but be opportunistic. Say, for example, you're going out and repaving a corridor or completely rebuilding a street and bringing it up to your city standards, maybe that's the time to get the complete street treatments and the bikeway and the walkway facilities in. So that's just one thing that we really like to encourage communities to do, is to be sure to stay familiar with the implementation framework and be open to change as time progresses. That is basically a summation of a year and a half's worth of work. We'd be happy to entertain any questions or comments, and otherwise, just want to thank you for your time this afternoon.
Thanks. Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Roy, for the presentation. And this is very important to me and dear to my heart, and it's an important quality of life amenity for the city. You know, we seen last time at our last city council meeting the importance of pedestrian access for the neighborhood. And it's been about five years since we adopted our bicycle transportation plan, so I think it's great that we revisit and we're adding the pedestrian portion that was not in the first one, and appreciate your work and look forward to implementation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We need a motion now from Vice Mayor. Receive and file.
Make a motion to receive and file.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you very much for your presentation. We appreciate it.
Thank you for your time. Go Dodgers.
Look what you started, Councilmember Rivera. Next item, please.
Under clo -- oh. Item B, Bicycle and Pedestrian Safety Report.
Mr. Gary?
Good timing.
That it is. Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and City Councilmembers. I'm Assistant to the City Manager, Chris Gary. And thank you, Madam Clerk. The agenda item before you this afternoon is a response to a previous referral from Vice Mayor Smith to examine ways to increase bicyclists and pedestrian safety. So today's presentation summarizes the recent fatality history of pedestrians and bicyclists in Bakersfield, reviews recent and upcoming projects and activities, and explores ways to increase safety. And since this topic involves multiple departments, city staff from Recreation and Parks, Public Works, and Police are available and answer to questions as well. In addition to a council referral, this discussion was also initiated following a report released by a nonprofit organization that examined bicyclists and pedestrian fatalities within metropolitan areas. So as a result, city staff began by reviewing fatalities just within Bakersfield city limits at the beginning of calendar year 2014 until present. During this time period, there have been a total of 64 fatalities, which bifurcates into 55 pedestrians and nine bicyclists. The chart on the top right-hand side displays a breakdown of these fatalities, where you can see that there's an upward trend year over year specifically for pedestrians. Next, city staff found that 73% of pedestrians and 56% of bicyclists were deemed the party at fault. And this determination is made following an investigation by the police department. We also examined the primary factors related to each fatality, and this was achieved by reviewing the frequency of the California Vehicle Code violations associated with each case. And although the primary factors span across 21 violations, 37 cases or 58% can be attributed to jaywalking, and the next highest frequency is only four cases or 6%, which is failing to yield to whomever had the right of way. So this map displays the locations of each fatality since 2014, which, again, are broken down by bicyclists as well as pedestrians. And you can see that there appears to be a concentration of incidents around Union Avenue, California Avenue, and Brundage Lane. So take the pointer here. You can see here's Union, here's Brundage, and here's California. Before city staff began exploring new or enhanced activities, it was important to first inventory what our existing efforts are. In regard to bikeways, the city has aggressively pursued infrastructure improvements over the last few years. For example, the city has recently completed or received funding to construct about 35 miles' worth of bikeways throughout Bakersfield. And these improvements equate to roughly about a 25% increase in new bikeways within the city's bicycle transportation network. These improvements are also imperative, since according to Caltrans, installing bike lanes reduces up to 35% of collisions. Next, the police department -- Next, the Police Department offers several safety programs within the community. For instance, bicycle rodeos are provided at various schools, local organizations, as well as events, where attendees can participate in road courses designed to promote safety. Bicycle helmets and other safety equipment are also provided to those in need as well. And also, the Police Department attends assemblies at local elementary, middle, and high schools as a means to encourage safety awareness. Next, city staff continually work with different advocacy groups and perform outreach in communities to identify safety needs. For example, the city is part of the Kern County Bicycle and Pedestrian Safety Coalition, which meets at City Hall monthly to discuss safety concerns. This coalition is comprised of different stakeholders, including the city, the county, GET, Bike Bakersfield, the Kern Council of Governments, and others that have interest So, as displayed, city staff is continually conducting outreach to garner support for various bicycle and pedestrian projects and activities, and specifically those that involve safety. The next activity, the Build a Bike program, is operated out of the Martin Luther King Community Center, and teaches children how to build their own bikes, as well as the fundamentals of bike repair, maintenance, and safety. Those children who successfully complete the program may keep their customized bike and their safety equipment. The Bakersfield mobile app also encourages safer modes of alternative transportation. App users can report such issues, such as traffic, or streetlight outages, potholes, or other conditions that create safety concerns. Finally, the city installs bicycle traffic signal detection at traffic signals, which help reduce delays and increases convenience and safety. In regard to pedestrian safety, most of the public right-of-way has sidewalks, with exception to undeveloped in some older areas within Bakersfield. And for the areas needing sidewalks since 2014, the city councils authorized approximately $8.8 million in community development block grant funds across 19 projects. In addition, the city has partnered with GET and the Kern Council of Governments to construct sidewalks and access ramps near bus stops throughout Bakersfield. The city has received over $1.3 million for these improvements over the last few years, and I think actually the last three fiscal years, not including this current fiscal year. Furthermore, the city also incorporates access ramp improvements within roadway projects to improve accessibility to sidewalks at intersections. For the next item, sidewalk evaluations, we've contracted with a firm to complete the city's Americans with Disability Act Transition Plan. And this plan evaluates certain aspects of the public right-of-way, including passive travel, intersections, curb ramps, and sidewalks. And city staff is currently looking, is moving into the next phase of this evaluation, which includes examining approximately 200 miles of high pedestrian and traffic areas. The next item, school zone improvements, the city undertakes various activities towards the beginning of each school year. And those types of activities include increased enforcement, undertaking maintenance or capital projects during the summer months, in order not to avoid with the school year, holding an annual back-to-school safety meeting for drivers within the solid waste division, and repainting crosswalks around schools. The city's also been retrofitting existing high-pressure sodium lights with LED fixtures over the last few years. These fixtures enhance safety by reducing glare and also increasing visibility. And since 2014, the city has completed, over 800 streetlights have been retrofitted. In addition, 220 streetlights are currently underway for an LED retrofit within the West Chester and East Bakersfield areas, which are supposed to be completed in early 2018. Finally, the city's been continuously installing pedestrian countdown timers, and these signals, which are viewed in the bottom right-hand of the slide, contain a timer display, and they count down the number of seconds left to finish when you're crossing the intersection or the roadway. And over the last five years, the city's received about half a million dollars in Caltrans Highway Safety Improvement Program, also known as HSIP funds, towards finishing this project. And I'm happy to announce with the most recent allocation of grant funds that it will actually convert the remaining countdown timers citywide in the near future. And why this is important is because Caltrans has identified that installing these types of timers reduces collisions by about 25%. The city has upcoming safety products and activities as well. As previously presented, the city participates in the development of the Kern Region Active Transportation Plan, which provides a blueprint for bicycle and pedestrian activities. And actually, the city contributed about $35,000 in Rose Foundation grant funds towards the development of that plan as well. For the next activity, the city, along with the Bureau of Reclamation, have been working on a proposed six-mile shared-use path along the Frank Kern Canal from the Kern River Parkway all the way down, or, excuse me, all the way up to Seventh Standard Road. This slide provides an aerial image of the proposed project, with the path beginning on Seventh Standard Road, which is displayed up here towards, on the left, at the right, on the left top side of the picture. And the project concludes at the Kern River Parkway, which is displayed at the bottom of the picture on the right-hand side, right around here. This path not only increases connectivity, but increases safety as well. And according to Caltrans, these types of improvements, they reduce up to 80% of collisions. We're currently working with the Bureau of Reclamation on this project, and we're working on the environmental review, and it should be completed in spring of 2018. And we anticipate pursuing grant funding for this project next calendar year as well. And so, here are a few renderings of the project, and what it could look like. And this is towards Seventh Standard Road, looking south. You can see the Frank Kern Canal on the left, and what a proposed shared-use path looks like on the right. And here is just south of the West Side Parkway, looking north, with the Frank Kern Canal on the left, and what a shared-use path would look like on the right. The next three projects are grant-funded through Caltrans Active Transportation Program, and they total approximately $3.5 million. The first project is the Downtown Bakersfield Connectivity Project, which adds about 19 miles' worth of new bikeways, 80 new bike parking and storage facilities, and establishes a bike-sharing program with up to 25 stations and 100 smart bicycles. In regards to this image, the green lines represent future bikeways. Grant funds are also available for this project in fiscal year 1920. However, there may be a chance to advance funds sooner than that date. The next project is very similar in name. Instead of bicycle, just switch out pedestrian. And with this project, it adds 128 access ramps, constructs 3,600 linear feet of sidewalk, and also improves a pedestrian median across Chester Avenue. I think it's Chester and 22nd where the GET station is. The red dots represent where the access ramps would be, and the thin red lines represent where a new sidewalk would go. And this purple area right here is where a pedestrian island would be. Oh, actually, I'm going back to this one very briefly. Funding for this project is available very soon, and we anticipate completing this next calendar year. The next project is the A Street Improvement Project, and this project adds about 8,400 linear feet of sidewalk, 29 access ramps, and some curb and gutter as well. The project is primarily located on A Street, in between Brundage Lane to the south and Santa Medio to the north, Santa Medio Street. And Santa Medio is just south of California. And as displayed, the streets severely lack sidewalks, and this is really compounded by the fact that, within this short stretch, that there's three churches and three schools on this block as well. Award of this project is actually on this evening's council agenda for consideration. And lastly, and as previously stated, the city is in the process of retrofitting its streetlights with LED fixtures. So, the question remains, how can we create a safer environment for bicyclists and pedestrians moving forward? And first and foremost, I think we're going to continue to implement our existing projects and activities, since we've made substantial progress over the years, and we want to continue these efforts. Next, we are establishing a bicycle and pedestrian fatality investigation team. The purpose of this multi-departmental team is to examine the causes of death, identify and identify ways to mitigate future accidents at those same locations. For the next item, we recently submitted a Caltrans Sustainable Community Grant Application to develop a bicycle and pedestrian safety plan. This plan would identify locations that have a high potential for collisions, and recommend safety improvements at those same locations as well. The grant award should be announced in December, and funds are available in spring of 2018. Next, the city will pursue additional education programs. However, the largest constraint with education programs is the lack of ongoing grant funding. Notwithstanding, we'll submit a grant application for a comprehensive education program through Caltrans Active Transportation Program next funding cycle. So, whereas, you know, the infrastructure dollars always seem to be there, the programmatic dollars are not necessarily as readily available. Also, the city is going to continue to collaborate with different agencies that can help promote safety. You know, just a few examples of things we may not have done in the past that we can look into is, the city and Caltrans can collaborate on ways to improve safety on Union, or the city and county can collaborate on ways to look at where there's been accidents that are on the border of unincorporated islands, and we can kind of brainstorm on safety improvements. And finally, we will continue to pursue additional grant opportunities. The city's received well over $10 million in grant funds for bicycle pedestrian projects over the last few years, and this amount does not include $8.8 million in CDBG-funded sidewalk projects. On the horizon, the next call for Caltrans Active Transportation projects will be in March of 2018, and it includes $440 million of statewide funding, which is, I believe, substantially more than any of the other funding cycles have been, and we have been successful in those funding cycles. So, we're very optimistic about this next round of funding. And to conclude, city staff and I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Vice Mayor Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chris. Appreciate the presentation, and appreciate the work staff has done the last few years. I mean, we've come a long way. 35 miles of bike lanes, countdown signals all throughout the city. But we still have a problem, and maybe we got a late start. But if you go back, if you can, to the map that showed the fatalities, and you even mentioned the Union, California corridor, and I know we're applying for a grant to do a safety plan, and you have a fatality investigation team. And maybe it needs to come back to council for a vote, or whatever, but I'd like to see, you know, some focus on that particular corridor. It's obviously a problem area, and if it just needs, you know, more lighting, light it up. If it needs the HOC signals for more crossings or something, if we could put something in to next year's capital improvement budget to improve the safety of those two corridors, that would be good. So, if staff would look at that, and if it needs to come back to council, or whatever it needs to do, I would appreciate it. So, with that, I would make the motion to receive and file, I guess, the report.
We have some council members who would like to speak. Councilmember Freeman.
Thank you. Chris, part of this is just, I want to be sure I heard right, that we will have countdown timers on all of our streetlights within the near future? Is that like a year, or?
Correct. I would defer to the Public Works Department for that, but I know we've received funding to complete that project. As far as how long it takes, I defer to Nick or his staff.
Councilmember Freeman, yes, it'll be processed over the next two years. We do have funding sources, but we are working through the next two funding cycles to complete.
That's a lot of crosswalks. I was just, I mean, the magnitude is huge. Those are great. I'm glad to hear that. Are they a requirement if you are new development, and you have to put in a streetlight? Is that now part of the cost of the streetlight?
That's correct. Our new standards require the installation with the countdown timers. We have roughly 425 to 430 traffic signals within the city of Bakersfield, so within the next two years, we'll have every one of those signalized intersections with the countdown timers on them.
And I noticed, when we were looking at the accident sheet, it looks like the majority of them take place on arterials. Is that true? Or do we not even have bike lanes if it isn't an arterial? Do we only have bike lanes on arterials?
We have bike lanes on arterials as well as collectors.
And on collectors.
Yeah, and I don't know if we have any on local roads, but maybe Class 3 on local roads, or we're planning on some bike routes on local roads.
Correct. We do have Class 3 that do travel through some of our local roadways. Class 3 are shared roads. There's marked as a bike route, but does not have a designated bike lane.
It just seemed like the heavily-traveled arterials or high-activity was where all these fatalities were. So, just as we, this is more of a future thought. If there's something in the way we construct arterials moving forward that was a much safer way for the bike lanes, I mean, I think we should be thinking, just to continue to put these five-foot bike lanes in, that, I mean, with 55 miles an hour, three lanes, it's pretty dangerous. And to continue to put miles and miles of them every year, knowing it's just an inherent, when there's a lot of traffic, it's kind of dangerous, that maybe we can look at street design on arterials moving forward that would, you know, help with that. That's, I guess, just for Public Works, just something to think about. Thanks.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor Go. Mr. Gary, thank you so much for your presentation, and I commend the staff for all of their hard work in improving bicycle and pedestrian safety throughout the city for the past several years, and commend Vice Mayor Smith for his leadership in this effort. In your report, you noted the collaboration between the city and with California Walks. And Vice Mayor Smith and I participated in the workshop in East Bakersfield recently. And I know they came up with their recommendations to improve pedestrian and bicycle safety for the community of East Bakersfield, and they have a list of recommendations in there, including a recommendation to establish crosswalk installation guidelines. And so, I wondered if staff had developed some recommendations and analysis to present to the council, and at what point we might hear more.
Sure. Honorable Mayor and Councilmember Gonzalez, I was actually at that event as well. It was very good, and it was very informative. I have not, I received the report, I have not looked at the report, so from the City Manager's office, I haven't looked at crosswalks. Perhaps the Public Works Department has in the past.
Honorable Mayor, Councilmember Gonzalez, we are currently going through our design standards. We do follow all of MUTCD design standards for crosswalks. Through the process of the 24th Street, we were informed of some new standards we weren't aware of. So, it is always a learning process, because the technology is changing so rapidly, especially in the bicycle and pedestrian fields, complete streets areas. So, we're constantly sending staff to various trainings in the Complete Streets program. So, we try to follow all the state furnished guidelines that we can.
Thank you. The second question I had was for Chief Martin. Chief, recently in September, the CHP conducted a pedestrian education enforcement action in crosswalks. Has the BPD engaged in such an effort, and what is the possibility for a future action?
Honorable Mayor, Councilmember Gonzalez, yes, we've actually participated in those types of enforcement actions as well. Just recently, our Community Relations Unit completed a crosswalk and bicycle safety PSA that's running. So, yeah, we're doing those same types of enforcement actions.
Great. Awesome. Thank you.
Councilmember Parlier.
Thank you, Mayor. Chris, do we have any light comparisons with cities our size, as far as their statistics, as far as fatalities, and what's going on in those areas?
You know, the, no. You know, the, no, I haven't, the, the statistics that I've seen were based on metropolitan areas. I haven't seen anything related to Bakersfield as far as a comparison to other cities. That, it's something we could do, though, in the future.
Okay. Thanks. And the, the last, it's not really a question, more of a statement. I, I know the police department's kind of going in this direction, but I would encourage city manager staff to continue to reevaluate the re-establishment of a police motor unit. I know there's some inherent dangers, you know, having that, but I think it's outweighed by the, the safety aspects of having that type of unit. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gary. You have a motion to receive and file? Please cast your votes.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Next item, please.
Under closed session, we have conference with legal counsel, potential litigation, two matters regarding letter of October 9th, 2017, from Californians Aware, and letter of October 18th, 2017, from First Amendment Coalition.
Vice Mayor?
Move to adjourn to closed session.
We're adjourned to closed session.